Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 24th River Council Meeting, River Falls Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next to the approval of the minutes from the October 10th, regular enclosed session meeting.
I so move.
I want to make a quick point of clarification before we approve the minutes tonight.
We need a second first before we get discussion.
Hang on. Okay, first and second, go ahead, Sean.
It appears that there was an innocent mistake of labeling our budget meeting on the October 10th as the Glen Park renovation project in our online minutes. Before we accept the minutes tonight, I want people to understand that this is not the correct label for it. I ask that we let the record show that this was mislabeled, but the contents of our last budget workshop meeting in it are accurate. I move to strike to remove the language Glen Park renovation project and put in budget workshop, so it's correctly reflected.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I got first and second on the red, on the original one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we'll go to approval of the bills with Mr. Bierstedt.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $1,321,072.88.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to talk about, now would be time to stand up. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a public comment. I had the distinct privilege of going to the Municipal League and Annual Conference this past week. I've been very busy. I wanted to thank the City of River Falls for sending me. The Municipal League is a nonpartisan entity. It has an overwhelming majority of our state's mayors and councilmen. It is an organization. We all work to better our local municipalities through teaching and learning best practices that benefit our cities locally, pulling together our brain power and creating awareness for local municipalities in Wisconsin. And what the league is unanimously currently saying is a warning to all local governments and cities in Wisconsin that we need to oppose the dark store strategy that gives big box corporations a loophole that shifts their taxes onto homeowners and small businesses. I'll give you a quick example. What that means is a fully operational store like a new Target gets to pay the same property taxes as a closed, empty, and vacant building down the street that is abandoned. That is exactly what these big box retailers are fighting for, and it's what is starting to happen more and more frequently. This is wrong and it needs to stop. In essence, the dark store strategy is a tax loophole being used by big box retailers and other national chains to lower the amount they pay in property taxes at the public's expense. Retailers such as Lowe's, Target, Walmart, Meijer, Home Depot, Walgreens, and Menards are arguing that their market value of their thriving store should be based on the sales of similar-sized comparable properties that are vacant and abandoned. For Walmart and comparable stores, this would be a one-third cut in most of their buildings. Another example, the City of Manoa, Wisconsin, has assessed Walmart for $646,485 in property taxes, but Walmart is seeking to cut their bill by one-third to $433,000 using this bogus legislation, dodging their fair share of taxes, resulting ultimately in homeowners and small businesses left to pay their taxes to sustain the city's services and level of commitment. If the legislature fails to close these loopholes, we estimate that millions of dollars in property taxes will shift from large commercial properties to homeowners and small businesses. I know that everyone who lives in the city will be very angry and upset if the state legislature allows this to happen. We must defeat this bill as a community. We must protect our homeowners and small businesses in our city. The solution is to call our legislatures and get them to follow the lead of the Indiana State Legislature and pass legislation in Wisconsin, closing off these tax strategies and stopping the tax shift to homeowners. Pass legislation prohibiting assessors from valuing thriving big box stores the same as abandoned and vacant buildings in a different market segment. We need our responsible citizens to contact their state representatives and tell them to stop the dark store strategy. There are 51 cities in Wisconsin who have passed a resolution in opposing the dark store strategy. I'm hoping we can become the 50th Senate. The vote is coming quickly in our state's legislature, so I ask that we consider passing a resolution opposing the dark store strategy in the near future. Please Google dark store tax loophole for more information. And with that, Mayor, I thank you for the time.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, my turn. We do a lot of good things in the city. This last week, we had, we had citywide cleanup, but there's something that comes up this Friday. Actually, you can do it anytime, but it's, it's an initiative by the police department to take back mainly opioids, but any pills or ointments that you have can be donated or disposed of is probably the better word for it, at the police department here in town. As I said, we can do it anytime, but maybe Chief Young, if you want to comment more about it. It's a great program and I hope people take advantage of it.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the introduction for it, Councilman Morsette. Correct this Friday from nine to five, we will have an extra staff member on just to take the collection in. It seems to be very popular in the city. And like you said, prescription and over-the-counter pet medicines, ointments, anything that you want to basically get rid of. And we even teamed up with a line of health to take sharps, any needles that you might have. Also take those. Normally, we don't do that on a regular basis, but because this is a special event, we will take that this time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything? Yep, come on up. Go ahead, come on, come on up to the right here, and you can, there should be a piece of paper up there, you can sign your name.
Okay. Russell Nelson, 127 West Quarry Road. I received a letter to, a couple days ago from a gentleman named Luker, who's the contractor for the sewer. He's going to do the assessment apparently. And the letter said that the sewer, proposed sewer, would be discussed tonight, and I'm a landowner in that property. So, are we getting any kind of briefing or anything here?
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, we'll be talking about that tonight.
Oh, we will.
Yep.
Okay.
As far as what, what, what was there information you need that you don't have now?
Well, I'm wondering if the city is going to send out some kind of packet, for starters. And we need a map. I don't know, I, they've got my backyard staked out.
For the easement?
Yes. But then we get into things like 75 feet from the river. Personally, I would like to have it moved a little closer to the DNR land that borders my property, because I, my land has been zoned commercially now for probably 20 years. And I see the sewer as being, you know, decrementing the value of the property. It'll never be sold as a residence again, even though I live there. Okay, so you cannot build over a sewer or for X number of feet in front of it. So, who is doing the assessor, assessment? What's the timeline? May I get a map precisely showing all this? Just got several questions about it.
If, if, if you don't get your questions answered during the thing, wait till afterwards and we can, we can talk to you then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Russell. Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, I'm going to close the council session and open up the public hearing on resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment public powers under section 66.0703, Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of River Falls Business Improvement District. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing. And I will, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers pertaining to the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to consent agenda. I did. Um, shouldn't I get thrown off?
Number two.
Got to get focused again.
My fault.
Let's see, consent agenda. Number two, acknowledgement of the following minutes: Utility Advisory Board from 8:21, the Library Board from 9:05, the House and Authority from 9:13, Police and Fire Commission from 3:06 and 8:21, and the Planning Commission from 10:03. And B is a resolution regarding purchase of election equipment. This resolution would authorize the purchase of six DS-200 machines and five express vote election machines for a total of $52,107. This purchase is necessary due to the state of Wisconsin no longer certifying the current voting machines as of the end of 2018. Does anybody want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I must poll number three.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda items 2A through E.
Second.
Any que, any que, go ahead. Any questions or comments?
I, I had a discussion with staff, and I know they're looking at it, but I'm a little, I questioned a little bit why we've got minutes from the Police and Fire, for instance, from March, that are just now coming to the council. I know we want to have approved minutes come, but I would assume they would have got approved at the August meeting. I believe there is some deeper dive going on by the clerk and some others to maybe put forth a better policy, but I, I'd like to see the minutes a little more frequently than that. I know Police and Fire is going to a as-needed schedule, but even Utility Advisory Board should have met in September, I believe. Maybe they didn't. I don't know.
We did not.
You did not. Okay, well, that answers that question. Thank you.
Anybody else? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Gagne, you pulled number three.
I guess the question I have for staff is what is the life cycle of the new equipment that we're going to be purchasing? And when would we reasonably expect to be purchasing new equipment? I know some of these were, what, 1987, or, I mean, it was, some of the equipment's pretty old. I'm just curious, what's the life cycle?
Um, that's not anticipated right now. There, there was no real discussion of what, how long we can anticipate to have these current machines. As discussed in the memo, we had some of the current machines since 1989. So, I don't know if we even anticipated that we would have those for, for that long a period of time.
With, with the political climate and things changing and things being a little more stringent on voting machines and making sure that we're doing it right, do you have any kind of speculation as far as when the next time that a state wouldn't be able to certify equipment, like now with our older equipment? I mean, so 10 years, 20 years? I mean, is there any talk out there as far as when we'd be spending this money again on new equipment?
There, there really hasn't. I just went to a district meeting that had some representatives from the Wisconsin Election Commission that we discussed specifically some of these different options and what we are looking at in the future. And their hope is that they're not going to have to do this regularly so that municipalities incur these kind of costs on a regular basis. But they knew after the last presidential election with some of the problematic things that happened with the recount and the recall, they took a closer look at the current equipment that was used in Wisconsin, and that led them to this decision.
Excellent. And, and I think it's important to make sure that we got quality voting equipment, so our, our votes are authentic and there is no errors, for sure. Is, my second question, is there any funds kicked back from counties and states and the federal government as far as incurring these costs, or is this burden completely on the municipality?
The burden is currently falling completely on the municipalities. I know from some discussions with Pierce County that they're hoping to put some money into their budgets to have some equipment that would be on standby, for some reason, at least for some of their smaller municipalities, to have some reserve equipment so that they could, could provide that to, to us if, if need be.
Okay. And third, does this equipment help us report? Because I saw something in there as far as reporting to the counties. So, will this help, like directly report it to them?
It will directly report at the end of the night, once all of our districts have reported to us. We would be remotely reporting those to the county.
Excellent.
I have a quick question, too.
Yes.
Do these new voting machines have a paper receipt that is generated much like a grocery receipt that verifies the voter rolls? For me, as long as we have a voter verifiable paper receipt that is generated, this will be a very good purchase, which secures and protects the vote.
Yes, there's, that is still currently available.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I just wanted to interject that we believe the machines have been, the current machines have been proven to be accurate and work. We're, we're making the change because we're being required to. But voters should have confidence that our elections have been conducted with machines that have been very accurate and have been a good value for us as a city, per trusting some of them a long time ago, and they were, they were still working well for us. And our clerk, Ms. White, was diplomatic, but the state has not been that helpful in giving us any prediction about when they next will decide to reach down and tell us that we have to do something different. So, there's not a great level of predictability coming from, from them, in my opinion. So, we're doing the best we can. We hope that this is the, we looked at a number of different machines, as was indicated in the memo, and we think this is our best, best combination of value, accuracy. We only looked at a couple different machines that are certified and that we are confident in, and then we tried to, to look at something that made sense with what our neighbors are using and how this is all going to interplay. But we're retiring machines that we believe are not past their life, but we have to go forward with, with the certifying agency.
Scott, that brings up an interesting question. So, those old ones that we're retiring, will we be holding on to those in cold storage in case something happens with these new ones and we need an emergency?
Uh, that's not the plan, no.
So, we're, they're going to go to landfill or trash?
Unless some school project or something buys them on Wisconsin surplus, I think. I'm not sure. Do we have to, are these having to be destroyed, or are they just going to...
They don't need to be destroyed. They're not retaining any information, but we'd love to find somebody that could use them, because they are great machines.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it would be a good emergency to keep it out.
I guess we should put it this way. There's probably other states that are in a difference, there's municipalities in other states that are not in the situation we are in that, that may be interested in our machines.
Well, let's put them up on eBay then and see what we get. I mean, seriously. If they have a value and somebody might want them.
As is our procedure.
Yeah, as is our procedure with all of the stuff, is we try to maximize anything that we're retiring. So, we will be doing that for these, too.
And I'll say, thank, thank you, Scott, for the clarification. And that was my question as far as the certification, because I did notice in there the state wasn't certifying these pieces of equipment anymore. So, thanks for clarifying that. Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of number three, resolution regarding purchase of election equipment.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next on to ordinance's resolution. Ordinance number 2017-18, amending Chapter 17 related to fences. This is the first reading. This ordinance will amend Section 17.08.070 relating to fence height in Title 17 zoning of the municipal code to allow four-foot fences in the side yard of a corner lot or the rear yard of a through lot. Does the council have any questions?
Yeah, I guess I do. Just on fences, I don't know, maybe I just didn't read it, but the clarification of a fence, is that even like hedges that could be used as fences? A hedge?
No.
No.
Well, I shouldn't say no for sure, but that's...
Because people use hedges for fencing.
Yeah, this is...
This is more for men.
And I, if anybody has any questions between now and the second reading, I'm also happy, because this was initiated out of my district. But, no, this only applies to physical fences, fencing structures, not hedges or any other grown...
And that's whether it's privacy fencing or wire fencing or whatever, just man-made fencing?
Man-made fencing.
Okay.
Anything you need a permit for?
Yep.
Anybody else?
Uh, do these fence we're looking at here, do they differ from agricultural fences at all? Because I know in rural communities, there's a lot big difference when it comes to the rules on fencing.
Yeah. My understanding, and maybe Amy...
Yeah, Amy can talk to it.
I'm just curious if there's any, like, part of our city that's butting up against agricultural zone fences. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't believe that in the code currently we have definitions for agricultural fences. We do not allow barbed wire in this city. That would probably be the closest that we come.
Okay. I think the situation that we're trying to rectify here, and, and I know we just passed a fence ordinance in the spring, or early summer, as it was being implemented, you know, some of these kind of situations start to bubble up when you put the rubber to the road. And in this, in a, one of these particular cases, well, as you, as you read in your packet, there's the issue of aligning fences around a pool with the fencing that would normally have to go around a yard, and trying to get those heights to be the same. And then also, situation where a resident wants to, or would like to put in a four-foot high fence in the backyard, but they live on a side, a, a street on a corner lot, and the four-foot fence to keep a, a pet, you know, a dog in the backyard. Currently, there would only be allowed a three-foot fence. So, this is to help just kind of improve on that situation and...
And then could I, could I ask Amy, is it possible for those of us that like pictures to, to have some illustrations of some of this stuff? Because you can read it, and I can imagine what's going on, but it might be different than, than the text. And so, without going to a bunch of work, it would sure be nice to have some illustrations.
Yes, and actually during Plan Commission, they also discussed not only four-foot, but potential for six-foot if it was setback from the property line. And as they were having that discussion, I realized it really is the graphics that's going to help folks see this better, so we can get those put together for you.
Thanks. Okay. Thanks, Amy. Anybody else? Thanks. Okay, number five is an ordinance number 2017-19. This, this regulation would be, create a regulation related to decks in Title 17 zoning of the municipal code. This, this would create the regulation in the municipal code that would add the definition of a deck, gazebo, and a screen porch. Does the council have any questions? Okay, and this is the first reading, so we'll move on to resolution approving the purchase of equipment for power plant substation update. This resolution would award the bid for high-voltage relay panels to Energous High-Voltage Resources Incorporated in the amount of $216,562.15.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the, where are we at here? Approve the purchase of equipment for a power plant substation update.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. This resolution for North Interceptor Sanitary Sewer Extension and St. Croix Street Outfall Stormwater Pond Rehabilitation, which would include approving relocation order for property acquisitions and authorizing professional services for property acquisitions. And Mr. Simpson will give us a little talk and presentation.
Mayor and Council, City Administrator Scott Simpson. I'm going to give you a short presentation based on the memorandum that was included in your packet from City Engineer Reed Ronsky. In the audience, we also have Ron Kwanbeck, who is the senior engineer from TKDA, who's the project manager for this sewer project, and also Tom Luker, who's with Land Services Company. He's the land acquisition specialist with TK, working on behalf of TKDA and the city. I've got a couple, you had in your packet, a little bit expanded memorandum on this, but I do want to touch on a few things. So, on, on March 22, 2016, the City Council authorized the city administrator to enter into an agreement with TKDA for professional services necessary to complete the initial work for the North Interceptor Sewer Project. And since that time, there's been a number of things that have taken place. Just for background, the north sewer area of the city serves 27% of the city's existing development area, and it's expected it'll serve over 40% of the city once it's built out. The Kinniknik Lift Station, which is a lift station near the Kenny River, or as I think of it, or in the Shopko Bridge, there's a lift station there that was constructed in 1992, so it's about 25 years old. In 1998, a comprehensive sanitary sewer study was completed. It analyzed five alternatives involving upgraded new lift stations versus a gravity flow sewer. So, in 1998, we looked at should we improve the lift station or transition to a gravity sewer from that point to the next gravity point of the sewer. The results of that analysis identified gravity flow sewer following the Kinniknik River as the recommended improvement. And the primary goals at the time and also, which are still the same today, are of using gravity for the sewer, increasing capacity, so accommodate the growth of the area, reduce operating costs by replacing a lift station with a gravity sewer system, and providing the ability to serve the area west of the Kinniknik River north of County Road Double M. That was all identified in the 2009 sewer survey. There's various options for routing a future gravity sewer. So, there's more than one way to connect from the lift station point to Manhole 1274, which is near the St. Croix Pond Outfall, near, near and, and in the vicinity of some buildings off of St. Croix Street there, near the old Coal Pack Building. They went through a number of routing, six to be exact, for establishing a gravity flow interceptor from the existing lift station to the manhole. There was, there was routes that included going through the valley, routes along streets, routes through different streets at the time. As a result of all the analysis and different routing that was done, on November 21st, 2016, the Utility Advisory Board accepted the recommended preferred route, and they directed TKDA to prepare preliminary plans, identify the permanent and temporary easements necessary to construct the project and maintain the system. And so, there's a map of the preferred route, and this also includes some of the other routes that were studied. So, the preferred route that was adopted is the green to the yell, the bright yellow, back over to the manhole 1274 that I referred to. So, the current lift station is here. In order to get gravity sewer, we need to get here. So, like I said, there were several routes all through this area that were examined to try to get the sewer. This was the preferred route that was recommended and adopted by the, ultimately adopted by the Utility Advisory Board. There has been a number of contacts with property owners through the course of the project. The proposed alignment was staked in the summer of 2017, and our consultants have had some meetings with property owners to review the alignment. There will, to see if there's mining or shifting necessary or things that the property owners were aware of that we might not have been aware of through survey. And there was many comments received by the consultants, and some of those comments are included in the, the packet. And then, prior to this evening's meeting, a letter was sent to the affected property owners informing of this council meeting where the relocation order will be considered. Now, approval of a relocation order is needed to initiate property acquisition process. So, this is statutory process required because the city possesses police powers or ability to, also condemnation of powers. So, there's a specific procedure set forth in the statutes to protect the rights of the property owners. So, we've kind of been going down that step. And now, we're at the step of a relocation order. So, that, that is a kind of a final, final indication from the council that they've reviewed the information and they're prepared to go forward with this route, and that this is the route that we're going to, to go forward with. Once the, the order is approved and recorded, then appraisals are made for all the properties to determine an estimated value of the property. And then those appraisals are used in negotiation with the property owners. If the city's offer is unacceptable, then the property owners have the right to obtain their own appraisals at city expense. Then there's settlement accounts that, that are reviewed, and according to the resolution you have in front of you, then the city administrator would have the ability to approve settlements between the property owners and the city. If, if negotiated settlements are not successful, then acquisitions will need to be completed via the eminent domain process. Staff at this time is recommending approval of the two resolutions for the North Interceptor Sanitary Sewer Extension and St. Croix Street Outfall. There's a res- Um, there's a resolution approving the relike, relocation order for property acquisitions, and then there's a resolution authorizing professional services for the property acquisition. So you're authorizing us to go forward, and then you're authorizing, um, that you're, um, gonna continue to use TKDA, um, to, to do those processes. Um, this project is included in the twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one CIP. Um, there's various sources of funds for, um, the sewer and the, the pond rehabilitation. Uh, the pond rehabilitation, by the way, um, is necessitated in part, as part of this project because of, um, the path of the sewer, um, the existing sewer and the proposed, uh, recommended route, um, makes sense for the city to, to, uh, consider while we'll be done with that pond at this time. So th- this project includes a gravity sewer and also some improvements to the St. Croix, uh, pond there, cause there's stormwater and sanitary sewer in that same spot. Um, so I'd be happy to take questions that the council may have, um, about what they may be doing. Um, the council received, um, kinda more detail regarding the, uh, the route. I'll just show one example of that. Uh... Claire might not work to our benefit here. So this is the full route, identifying the property owners, the preferred route, um, with the actual widths of the route, and what easements will be required to facilitate the project. And then there's a second level of de, oh, there's two more levels of detail. So then there's, um, next level of detail. Next level of detail is this, this type of map. So that kinda zooms in, um, on a little tighter scale. And then in the area of the St. Croix Pond, it's even a tighter scale. Um, the city has a number of easements on many of these properties already. Um, so in some cases, these are partial acquisitions or additional acquisitions of easements, um, when combined with existing easements, then will facilitate the project. In some cases, it's a new easement entirely, where the city does not possess an easement. Um, and in many of those cases, then there's a temp, what's considered a temporary construction easement, um, where there might be equipment or other things on, on a private property owner's property in order to facilitate the project. So all that's in part of the relocation order. Um, what you're being asked to do is approve, um, uh, the project moving forward, indicating the exact route that you're going to do, and authorizing your consultants and staff, um, and city attorney to proceed with the acquisition of the property. Um, obviously, it's important to approve the project in whole, um, because of purchasing one o, of eight properties doesn't have a lot of utility, um, for the city or the property owners to not understand. So, so this is the route that, that's been recommended, um, and, uh, we, staff is recommending your approval of, of the two resolutions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Scott?
Let me just understand, this is a first reading of this, so we're...
Nope.
No, this is, this is...
This is action.
This is action.
I, I just have a simple question, Scott. We're, I, I hear the word acquisition and I hear the words easement, whether they're current or, or future. So are, are we acquiring some of the property, or are you just saying we're acquiring an easement?
Um, I view those as one and the same. I understand what the distinction I think you're trying to make. The, the project requires us to acquire easements.
Okay.
Um, so the, the minimum required for us to facilitate the project is to, to acquire an easement, um, through the property. Depending on how the pro, the process plays out, there, it may be the wish of the property owner that we actually acquire the property rather than an easement. Um, there's, um, different definitions in law about, um, remnant parcels that may be rendered, um, uneconomical, um, to the property owner. Um, on those cases, the law allows us to actually acquire that property, um, if the, the property owner agrees. So the goal of the project and what's laid out in front of you is to acquire an easement, um, use of the property for the purposes of sanitary sewer extension and in some cases stormwater, um, management. Um, but the goal is not fee simple property ownership of all of the property.
But it can happen.
It is a possibility.
Okay.
Typically through the negotiated process. If, if it goes to condemnation, typically the city just acquires through condemnation an easement.
Okay.
Anybody else?
A quick question. What, um, in terms of the route and, and the level of specificity on the route, as you get into these negotiations with, uh, landowners or further discussion, um, is there, is, is there room for the, uh, for the engineering level of the, uh, specificity of the route to change along the way, or is that, um, completely set in stone and been, uh, marked, flagged, and kinda ready to go?
I, I can give you a layperson's response, and then perhaps, uh, Reed will wanna have, uh, Ron or Tom give you a, a better response, but this is the route. So it's already been identified engineering-wise. If you were to make modifications to that route, they'd have to hit, fit within the totality of the project and likely then be negotiated changes. So there, I believe there's a possibility that a property owner and the city could agree, we're gonna move it one foot or two foot because from the edge of your property, the edge of the property, we can accommodate that, um, but it wouldn't likely be through the condemnation process. The condemnation process is outlining the route. This is the route that we're gonna proceed if we're unable to, to purchase through negotiation. So I don't, does that answer your question, or did you want some...
That answers my question, yes. Okay.
I'd like to know if there's anything from the landowners, you know, I see Mr. Nelson here, Ms. Rugo here. Um, I'm just, I don't feel comfortable voting for or against this, and, um, unless I'd, I hear some of their voices on this, so...
That's up to the mayor. There's no public hearing. This is a, this is a decision for the council to give direction to staff if you're ready to proceed.
I mean, don't have plenty of time to...
I do have a question, just a point of clarification, if I may. Um, so by, by, um, approving these resolutions, and this sets things in motion that actually give the property owners rights with teeth in them, right? I mean, this, this, um, uh, uh, invokes the statutes and, um, the owner's property rights. Uh, is, is that correct? I mean, they, they do have, um, um, some remedies and some say in how the land is valued and how they're compensated, correct?
Yeah, I don't wanna sound like I'm in a deposition, but, I mean, the property owners have the rights inherently.
Right, right.
So they're not getting something from the process, but it more formalizes that these are their rights, and we agreed to follow those rights, and here's what we're gonna go forward. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying it, it kind of gives them a process. It, it gives a process that can be followed.
Yeah, I mean, chapter thirty-two sets forth a specific process for how you go into negotiations with property owners and then how you can move on to acquire it by eminent domain if the negotiations are unsuccessful and there are notices and, and, you know, procedures set by statute.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would agree. I mean, this is just the beginning. This is how the discussion starts, so I'm, I'm comfortable with starting that discussion.
Understand, understanding that you're providing, the resolutions in front of you are providing authorization for the staff to go forward with acquisition up to and including the condemnation. So there isn't, it isn't like we'll go see if this is okay, and if not, come back. It's proceed with the project. So, um, and we're fol, again, we're following, uh, a statutory, the, all the contacts with the property owners up to this point and going forward are all following the statutory. We didn't not put a public hearing on because we're trying to avoid contact with the property owners. We're following what the statutes have, have clearly put us, um, in as far as contact with property owners. So as to preserve their rights and, and information. So, but it's, it's up to the council how much or how little you wanna talk about it or what process you wanna use, um, to make your decision about the resolutions, I guess.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with the council asking questions and discussing amongst themselves. But like you said, we've been in contact with the, with the customers, and we will be in contact with them throughout the process, and so I'm, I'm fine with us going forward. If anybody else, more questions for Scott, or otherwise, I'll entertain a motion on it.
I'll move approval of the resolution approving relocation order for property acquisitions for the North Interceptor Sewer and St. Croix Street Outfall Pond.
A and B.
A and B.
A and B. A and B.
Second. Any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next, move on to, did you get that, Kristi?
Mr. Mayor.
Do you wanna do a, you wanna do a...
Did you get the votes, Kristi?
I got Ron's and your's.
Is that correct? Okay. And then, um, maybe Tom and Ron can wave a hand so that any property owners that are here that want to talk to them, that would be, um, their resource to get additional information.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you.
Next, move on to reports. Uh, the first one is Ms. Jolene Larson's gonna give us a report on the Business Improvement District, and this is always very riveting.
I'll keep it up for an hour.
Thanks. You say that every year.
I know, but it's tough, you know? There's so much to tell.
Where am I? Where am I? Where is it? My lovely assistant.
Yes. So you got your...
Oh, well, I'll call you when I need you. Thank you. My name is Jolene Larson. I am the current, um, president of the bid board, and I think I've been that for a while. Um, we gotta check on that one of these days. Um, I wanna first thank, uh, this board, the mayor, uh, city administrator, staff, specifically Amy, who's, uh, takes our minutes and kinda keeps us in check to get our stuff done in time, uh, and Terry Kuzlik and his team, because without them, a lot of our projects wouldn't get done. I also wanna big shout out to the Sandy Bone and the Second Street Gardeners for continuing their work for that, because they're a great group of volunteers and all their time is volunteered, and without them, uh, I can assure you that the Second Street Gardens wouldn't continue. Um, and of course, we wanna, uh, thank our continued support from our business sponsors and, and, and supporters, because without the businesses supporting us, uh, we wouldn't be here as well. Uh, some of you have heard this, uh, probably five or six or seven times, um, and I can probably do it in my sleep. But, uh, to give some of the new members here, a brief history, in nineteen eighty-nine, a group of business people were looking at downtown improvements, and, uh, River Falls kinda came to a feen, uh, kinda was like a phoenix. We kinda took off, and then we hit kind of a rough patch there, and in nineteen eighty-nine, a group of business people went to Red Wing and decided they wanted to see what they could do to improve downtown. Uh, in nineteen ninety, the council and the business leaders voted to be one, first, one of the first five Wisconsin business improvement communities in the state. Um, basically what that means is the business owners within a defined core, uh, area, which for us is Main Street, comes up to Second Street, just the businesses on Second Street, not the residences, uh, goes over to Division Street Cascade, and then follows the, the river, the Kinniknik River, uh, pay a special assessment, uh, each year on their taxes, uh, and it's based on their property values, and that goes into a special account for the Business Improvement District. So that's why we thank them for their generous re, support. Yeah, I wanna point out that we have not raised the business assessment since the beginning of the bid, and again, this year we chose not to, and I don't foresee that happening in the future, uh, as far as I know. Uh, we're, we're satisfied and we think it's a fair assessment. Uh, and from nineteen ninety to two thousand, the project was called Main Street Two Thousand, kinda with the idea of, you know, two thousand where everything was gonna, I don't know what was gonna happen, but nothing really much happened. Um, and basically, the program, when it started, the Wisconsin program had four things that we had to do. We had to have a full-time paid staff, we had to have an office, which meant overhead expenses, and then we were required to meet four points of, in our, in our procedure, which were design, promotion, organization, and economic restructuring. And then every year, we were assessed and had a, a kind of a report card on how we did, and we didn't do very well with several of these things. Um, the four-prong approach works in great in communities have large bids, bid budgets. Our budget is about forty-two thousand dollars a year, uh, that's assessed. Uh, we had, in the beginning, some monies given to us by both, uh, St. Croix County and, uh, Pierce County Economic Development Corporations, and the city put some money in there, mostly because we had staff and those kinda things to pay for. Um, but in the first ten years of the project, we basically used a hundred thousand dollars on bid, bid projects downtown and invested that into the, the project. In two thousand, we lost our last director, and, um, well, we didn't really lose her, she quit. We know where she is. Um, but we found that, um, we kinda reassessed it and took a look at it. We were collecting all this money, um, we'd spent a lot of, what we thought at that time was a lot of money. We had accumulated about a hundred thousand dollars sitting in the bank for a rainy day project, um, but we were a little concerned because when we started looking for staff, most of our budget of the forty-two thousand was gonna go into overhead, um, salary, and FICA. And so we decided to be more singular in purpose and not do a director, not continue to be Wisconsin, um, bid community, um, and go to a volunteer board and see what happened. We didn't think we had anything to lose, and we only had everything to gain, and that's where we are today. Um, we don't get any, uh, help other than the help of city staff. Uh, the whole board is volunteered, um, and basically funnel all our money back now through sign and facade grants, beautification projects, which are like the Second Street Gardens, uh, the Main Street hanging baskets, of which we're gonna add twelve new baskets to Division Street Bridge this year, uh, trash, uh, receptacles, cigarette receptacles, benches, and then we do partner with the River Falls, uh, Chamber Commerce on the Holly River Dazzle Project, um, and then cab and music in the park. But we feel those are projects that bring a lot of people downtown and revitalize our community and our businesses. So from nineteen, um, from two thousand on, uh, we have spent a little over, and I need a drum roll, uh, eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, uh, downtown. All that money has gone back to our constituency and to the Main Street, and none of it has gone for salaries or kind of those kinda things. So I thought tonight I'd just show you some highlights of what we've been up to, I think. Um, this is Lori's Day Spa. She's one of our, uh, most recent, uh, projects. The sign was done several years ago, but she recited her whole building, um, and we paid, um, she qualified for a grant, um, and it looks great. So those are the kinds of things we do. We try to do outdoor improvements, facades and signs, and the biggest reason for doing that is cause businesses can come and go, but the buildings on Main Street and on Second Street are there forever, and whether they've got people in them or they don't have people in them, it makes a difference in how our downtown looks. And so we want to, to really help the businesses, um, maintain, uh, how their buildings look. Uh, we also have mural project. We have a, these are kinda the bookend, I call them bookend murals across the street. This would be on the building next to Subway. Across the street is the River, uh, Riverwalk Project, where we've done a mural there. Uh, this mu, mural has just been completed. There was an article, a very extensive article in the River Falls Journal about the history of this piece. Uh, this is pretty personal to the building owner. This is her, um, kind of her view of the childhood and her growing up in nineteen fifty-four. Uh, Dave Markson did this mural. It's been kind of in the works for a couple of years for us. Uh, this mural we paid for, uh, with our, we have a mural project funds, and how that works generally is we have two ways we can do, work with a business. They, we can do it as a facade grant, and they retain, uh, care, custody, and control of the mural. mural. Or we prefer to do that ourselves and we pay for the whole mural. And then what we do is set aside money for vandalism. We keep it up. We know it's going to be painted, and we know it's going to be there for a while, instead of disappearing, or somebody selling the building and then the mural goes away, and that causes a lot of angst. So we're glad to have this one finished. We are looking for another mural project for 2018, and I think it looks pretty darn good. This, I wish I had a before and after, because you really can't tell what's been done to this building. However, River Falls Insurance Center is kind of right in the center of that building, and they had small windows. I don't have a before picture, but we just got done putting a large window in their building, and they qualified for grant money for that. And it looks great. And it's really helped, you know, the building owner, or I guess the building owner have another valuable thing done to their building, but it's helped the business as well, get more visibility. This building has been worked on all through the summer. It's the, I like to call it the Banco Building. It's the old red and white, if you're really old like me. It's Bob Colburn's old building, and I can't remember the new owners' names. But it's been recently purchased, and he's been putting a lot of time and sweat equity into this building. He's done a lot of work himself. We've recently helped him with awnings. He's painted the building. It's a better shot, is this one. It's got, we also did the RE/MAX Synergy Sign, but he's put that in front and new awning, and the building's looking really terrific. So it's glad to see a new owner get in there and do some new work. And I think he's got some more things to do. So these are the kind of things that we do with our money. This, I wish I had a before and after one, too. This is Burrito Express, which was located in what was the, I don't even know, library or what was it?
Bud's Lanes.
Oh, in Shiner's. I remember it as Bud's Lanes. What do I know? But that is, they're, I don't believe they're open yet. We're excited, but they've redone, that black is gone, the awning that was kind of hanging is gone. And we're very excited to have another business downtown. So we're ready to have them open. So. The other thing that we did this year is we have a cigarette receptacle program where we've tried to help with that problem on Main Street, but yet not add to the city's angst in trying to figure out how to get this done. So what we did is we partner with the businesses. We buy the cigarette receptacles. We give them to the businesses. The city puts them in, the city staff puts them in so they don't get stolen. And then the business owner for that agrees to keep them emptied. And so it's a complete partnership with all three entities. So that's kind of the highlights of this year. I don't know if you've got any questions, but we thank you for your support and...
I got the same question I always ask you. Have you guys, do you guys ever think about expanding a little bit further south or further north?
You silly man.
I know, I know. But I mean, there's so many businesses that you guys could...
You know, occasionally, we get calls from businesses on the north end, and, you know, about how to get grant money. And it would be great if somebody wanted to take that on. I don't have the energy for that, but it is, I would say it's a can of worms, because it is a tax assessment, and it's a tax on value. And the larger the portion, the higher the tax. And I think when you get, go too far out and you see some of these larger pieces and parcels, you're going to get a lot of, it's a, I mean, I was here when this came through, and it wasn't smooth sailing in 1989. Let's put it that way. So there is some good value to that, and it's a good program. But it would take the right kind of people to get it done.
Okay. Jolene, I got a quick question for you. Maybe Julie might be able to chime in here. I know that through regional planning out of Eau Claire, we, there's also some facade grant or programs involved through there. Do we partner with them, or what kind of, what kind of relationship?
A lot of times when the business owners come to our meetings, we meet the first, the second, first, the second Tuesday of the month at City Hall at 8:30 in the Foster Room. A lot of times, the new businesses inquire from us. We have a website, they can come and get information. We also, staff is really good about giving them all the information, because there's, you know, the revolving loan fund, there's facade improvements. So they get a really good, and we put them in contact if it's a big enough project. Usually, when they come to build, pull a permit, if they haven't heard about us, staff says, you know, hey, you've got a new sign. You would call, you know, you're on Main Street, you should go see, you should do an application. And, you know, a lot of times, if they're forward-thinking enough and it's time enough for us to vote for it. So that's how staff has been really good. And I think they've really stepped it up in the last year or so, getting this information into people's, the business owner's hands. So, yeah, we do.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Jolene? No? Thanks, Jolene. You guys, you know, for all volunteers, and you guys are all volunteers, you guys have done amazing things for downtown.
And if everybody wants to help hang the baskets, we hang them Wednesday after Memorial Day. Meet at Dance.
Yep. Thanks, Jolene. Okay, next, we'll have our Finance Director, Al Rollick, is going to give us a little presentation on the budget.
Oh, I'd love to, if I can figure out how this works. Escape. Ah, there we go. Find my presentation here. There it is. Good evening, Mayor and Vice-Council. As you said, I'm Al Rollick, I'm the Finance Director. I'm going to take a few minutes and give you the budget in brief for this year. Before I get into the presentation, I think it's good to know that the city council really undertook the bulk of the budget work last year and approved a two-year budget. What we're here tonight to say is there really hasn't been a lot of change since last year in the budget. We are not proposing any changes for the coming year. This will just kind of give you a rundown of the things that we consider in bringing the budget to the city council, and what some of the things that we're looking forward to in the coming year. So first of all, the budget is a result of a lot of work that precedes it. The first thing that I want to say is that the budget really follows a strategic plan that the city council has developed. And that incorporates a lot of direction, a lot of visioning, and what the council perceives for the city in the coming years. And in doing so, they undertake a lot of other planning measures. They look at developing a major work plan, which the city council just adopted in July for 2018 and 2019, 2017 through 2019. The fiscal plan, which will be coming to you later, I think it's a meeting in December, I believe. And the comprehensive plan, which is a process that's undertaken every number of years. And so there's a lot of planning, capital improvement planning that goes along. And the budget is kind of the outcome of all of that planning and directing the dollars that the council receives through a number of sources, the bulk of which is property taxes, and directs those dollars towards those strategic initiatives. So we're not just coming out here and spewing a lot of numbers towards the city council. We're giving you, we're putting the dollars to work where the city council feels that they're needed to accomplish and fulfill those visions and provide the services that the citizens are looking for. And so the themes of the 2018 budget really are staffing. We have an emphasis on direct service and succession planning. In fact, for 2017, we had budgeted an amount from the city's reserves towards succession planning. I'm here this evening to say that our projections show that we're really not going to need to use those. And so we are going to maintain our general fund reserves and general reserves coming into the next year. We also have continued maintenance of our existing infrastructure. So our streets, our forestry parks, electric water, and other infrastructure needs are contained within our budgeting philosophies. We also have major projects, and we'll talk a little bit more about them later, but things like the Glen Park improvements, the Kinney River Corridor, power plant, substation, the North Interceptor, which you were just talking about previously. Those kinds of projects are built into our budget in our CIP process. And we are directing dollars towards those projects that are most important and most needed within the community. How do we determine our property taxes? Really, we start out with how much money is required to provide those services that the community wants. And then, once we have that, we look at the strategic needs. We look at the fiscal plans and our fiscal resources that we have. And then we look at what the budget plan is and what, how we're going to portion those dollars over the next two years. The physical or mathematical part of this is, we determine how much money we need to do that. And then that, those are distributed amongst the community by means of property value. And the proportion of that, my property, if I live in River Falls, the proportion of the value my property has in River Falls, that's a proportion of the tax base, or the tax levy that I'm going to pay. And so it's really rather simple, but it can be kind of complex in trying to determine what exactly that value should be. So anyway, the budget plan includes funding, staffing plan for all of the city's operations, including those using property tax dollars. Our property tax base has been growing over the last couple of years. You remember back in the late 2000, 2007, eight, nine, 10, we were seeing those property values being reduced as the, as the real estate markets kind of broke in, and everybody saw that decline in those property values. Well, from 2013 through today, we've been seeing a steady increase in those property values. And that's due to a couple of different reasons. One, the markets are getting stronger. And so my property value, that might have been $100,000 back in 2013, is now, you know, worth $150,000. It's just the dynamics of the market. The second thing that comes into play is new construction. And as we talked about in 2016, 2017, last year, Scott referred to this as the year of wow. And you had a lot of things going on, a lot of initiatives, a lot of, you know, the Sterling Ponds projects, Land of Lakes coming in, and so forth. So you had a lot of, lot of properties coming in, adding a lot of value. And that's been happening over, over the last three, four years. And it's, the way it looks, it's going to continue to happen into the future. Our prop, or our city budget, we really have six areas that we, that we provide money to. The first thing is the general fund. The general fund is really our major fund. It provides all the services like police, fire, road maintenance, snow plowing, parks, inspections, and so forth. So that's our, that's a major part of our budget. That's the core of our services. We also fund enterprise funds, mostly through fees that we charge for electric, water, wastewater, and so forth. Special revenue funds, which encompass things like our taxi service, our library, and those types of functions. Capital projects funds, the things that we're going to talk about later, like the Kinney Corridor, like the North Interceptor, and so forth, are included in those funds. Debt service, a lot of those projects that we just talked about require debt financing, and so we have to provide the dollars to pay those over time, that area. And then internal service funds, which basically, we're providing services, the city is providing services to its internal departments. And so those dollars are basically, it's a conduit for providing those funds and dividing them equitably throughout the city. And as you can see, it even gets more complex than that. We're talking about many, many subdivisions below the subdivision, so in the budget. So we're seeing quite a bit of, you know, trickle down throughout all of these various funds within the fund groups. When we take a look at just the general fund, as I was talking about earlier, the general fund is all of those services, those core services that the city provides. About 63% to 65% of our dollars that we spend in the general fund go towards public safety and public works. Those are our two really core functions, maintaining our safety, maintaining the fire department and the police department and so forth, and then taking care of our roads and taking care of our forestry needs and so forth. And then we have culture and recreation and development, which are about 7% piece. General government, which basically is our administration, comprises about 18% of our general fund budget. Coming back to our major capital projects, our 2017-21, 2021 CIP has a number of projects in it, and these are some of the larger projects included for '27 and '18. And they include the Glen Park Plan Implementation, Million Seven. And I think it's also important to say that some of these are only partial, so partial amounts. They're started in 2017, 2018, and they may carry on through 2019, 2021, and so forth. So this is just the portion that we're planning for in these first two years. Glen Park, Million Seven, Wayfinding Project, $185,000. The Kinney Corridor Planning Effort, planning for future public safety facilities and so forth, doing those planning, those planning endeavors to see what it's going to take, see what kind of buildings we want to have for those facilities, for those functions, and then how we're going to finance them and so forth. So we've got a lot of projects here. I think just on this, on this, we have well over $7 million worth of projects. And so we're a busy community. We've got a lot going on. Legislative changes, they haven't, we talked a little bit about them earlier in our work session with some, in some areas. But as far as property taxes or personal property taxes are concerned, there have been some changes, moderate changes. For instance, the legislature took a look at totally eliminating the personal property tax from here on in, and funding it through a state, state aid, if you'd call it that. And what they chose to do is just eliminate the personal property on machinery tools and patterns. Now, this is approximately $3 million in value, and it would generate about $21,000 in local tax revenue. That $21,000 will be made up by the state and paid directly to the city. However, there, that will be capped at $21,000. So it will not grow as maybe personal property taxes might in the future. So there's a pro and a con there. We'll see those dollars come in, they're going to remain that into perpetuity. And then the other thing is our exempt computer aid. I don't know why we even included this, because it was so minimal. But I wanted to make sure, we do receive about $4,000 or $5,000 in computer aid a year. We'll see that increase by about $100 next year. So what are we asking the council to do? Well, we're not asking you to do anything tonight. This is just an information presentation to you. We have an $83 million budget that was presented in 2016 and adopted by the city council. We're coming to you this time of the year to take another look at that. We're going to need to approve a levy for 2018. We can only approve one year's levy at a time. So we're coming to you to approve a levy. The levy that we'll be bringing to you is $6,222,000. And just to, to kind of throw a feather out to Julie, on the last, in the most current issue of the fiscal plan, our fiscal plan, and again, it was a projection, came out to $6,222,000, $21,000. So we're just $21,000 off, so that's a pretty good projection. We will be asking you to authorize that levy and to spread that to the properties within River Falls. With that, if you have any further questions, I'll be glad to entertain those. And to... And to people in the public, we are always here. The information is out on our website. We have copies just of, of the budget distributed around town, the City Hall, of, of Public Library, Brary, and so forth. And members of the staff are always here to discuss that with the public.
Anybody have any questions? No? Thanks, Al.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next move on to Administrator's Report. Anybody's got anything for Scott, or Scott's got anything for us?
Just a reminder, this week, the Kenny Corridor Project Community Design Workshop will be held October twenty-fifth to twenty-eighth at the River Falls Public Library. The first public session, number one, is six PM to eight-thirty PM on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth. Be additional opportunities for the public throughout the four-day event. Thursday, October twenty-sixth, the, the Community Design Studio is open for people to, to participate. The next community public session will be held Friday at, from four to six PM. During Friday, from nine to noon is Community Design Studio, and noon to four is a Design Ideas Gallery. Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from nine to five is the continuation of the Design Ideas Gallery. And from five to seven PM is the, the public session, number three. I will, will note that this is part of a three-year process the city is undergoing with the Kenny Corridor process. And this is one of two community design-type workshops, this one being a charrette. And then in about twelve months or so, we'll have another process for community engagement to refine the ideas further.
Anybody have anything for Scott?
Scott, could you give an update of thoughts and where we're at with the dog park?
I can't, but Julie might be able to.
It was, I can tell you that it was brought before the Park Board on our, at our Wednesday meeting. And the plan was approved by the Park Board, and I believe it's going to head to another committee for consideration.
Excellent.
Any more? I, I think we're going to go to the Town of River Falls Park Board meeting this week. Cindy and Terry Kuzlikar, so we'll let you know when it happens.
All right, good. Thank you.
What are we expecting from the towns, as far as their involvement?
We are expecting just to cooperate, number one, and to coordinate on a project together. And also, the Town of River Falls has access to some money from Pierce County for park funds. So if they deem that they would like to request that for our project, that would be great.
And this would be really open to the general public, no matter if you're River Falls, township?
Yes. Rules really haven't been defined at this point, but I'm anticipating it'd just be open to anybody who wants to take their dog there. And it's beautiful out there, so we're looking forward to it.
I've got two, I'll bring them down.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? On to Comptroller's Report.
This is the Comptroller's Report for September twenty seventeen. General Fund revenues through September were seven million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, or seventy-one percent of budgeted. This compares with eight million, nine hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars at the same time last year. The reason for the difference in revenues from twenty sixteen is the twenty sixteen sale of land to Land O' Lakes for the Winfield Projects for one point eight-eight million. In September twenty seventeen, the city received sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars in payment in lieu of taxes from the River Falls Housing Authority. Expenditures through September were six million, nine hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and two dollars, compared with six million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars a year ago. Spending is still consistent with prior years at sixty-eight percent of budgeted amounts. Net of revenue over expenditures at the end of September is a surplus of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, next, we were going to recess into closed session. Per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five-one G for the following purposes: conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation and which it is or is likely to become involved to wit the Town of Troy versus City of River Falls.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recess into closed session.
Second. Christie, can I have a roll call, please?
Watson.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Biersted.
Yes.
Morsett.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.